Good evening. I'd like to call November 6, 2023, the meeting of the University and City Council Board. This is Thomas Sweetall.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mrs. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Cooney?
Here.
Mrs. Wise?
Here.
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Ms. Marshall?
Here.
Ms. Weiser?
Here. All our present, please join in reciting the pledge.
My pledge is to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united as one with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the reading and disposal of the journal. Is there a motion regarding the October 16, 2023 minutes?
So.
And motion to approve by Mrs. Weis, is there a second? I'll second. Second by Mr. King, any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call, that included the changes?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. What were the changes?
The ones over email, there were a couple names that were misspelled, some titles, and then I can't remember, someone made adjustment to the amount of...
Number of words?
Yeah. So those were names.
Amounts of the number of words?
The number of words in a Cleveland.com article.
Oh.
They're doing my...
Okay. All right, so changes noted. Mrs. Thomas, we call roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Very good motion carries. Is there a motion to reconsider the minutes of the October 2nd, 2023 minutes?
So.
Okay, motion by Ms. Marshall, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Sacks. Any discussion of a motion reconsider? Mrs. Thomas, we call a roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Upset.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Very good motion carries. The motion to reconsider the October 2nd, 2023 minutes having passed, are there any motions with respect to the October 2nd, 2023 minutes?
I see. Yes, I do.
Sure, this is second.
I would just like to say that immediately after that meeting, I listened to the audio and the mayor had not said no, which I thought he did, in my notes, and the reason I had them in my notes is because when I went to look at it before, I was read out, it wasn't punishable, I had to listen to the MP3 version that Mrs. Thomas had posted, and so that was for my notes. I'd also like to just say that actions speak louder than words, even though the mayor did not say no, he never acted upon getting the air quality tested from qualified certified off your actions, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move.
Okay, so this should be a motion to approve the October 2nd minutes without the addition of putting words into the record that I did not say.
Correct.
Thank you. Motion by Mrs. Sacks, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Rock. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Upset.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall, is there a... Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Okay, very good motion carries. Thank you. Are there any additions or removals from the agenda or referrals to committee? Same down. We will take comments from the audience, speakers are limited to five minutes, if you'd like to address the city this evening, please come on up to the podium, speaking with microphones, figure your name, your resume for the record, and you may take up to five minutes. Thank you.
My name is Dan Parrish, living 4466 Baintry. So I've come tonight to speak in opposition once again to Chick-fil-A, which I thought we were done with, but apparently not. What I've understood is that at the last planning commission meeting, we decided to ignore our zoning to Waverly, which as Mr. Rock stated, you know, there's a reason we can't have a gas station next door, how zonings prevents that, and since we apparently don't care enough about the social aspects, the trouble history of Chick-fil-A, two, there we go, it's troubling six foot tall, to make that be what stops us, more practical considerations should matter, the fact that we are ignoring our own laws should matter, and if it doesn't, then what's next? Number two, the intersection there is horrific. It takes probably five, 10 minutes when, you know, maybe we had better cooperation with South Yew, but the problem is because I know that light beyond that intersection away from us isn't South Yew, but it's not entirely our doing, but the very thing that intersection most needs is a Chick-fil-A to make everything worse. I will grant that my silly alternative persona on Facebook, the dictator of University Heights, wants maximum suffering, but the real thing, Parrish actually hates suffering, especially is annoyed by the amount of crap we already have. We don't need Chick-fil-A, there are so many better things to do with that space, and I'm just going to be very disappointed if that goes in. I hope we make better choices than to ignore our own laws and make our worst intersection even worse, is all I know.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the city this evening? Yes, please. We do need to speak with microphones.
So I live over in South Yew, but my name is Judy Schoenfield, and I drove a two blocks today from Bushnell over to Okalona, and in that two blocks, I drove, I came up Bushnell and I turned right onto Warrensville. There were five fast food places, there were two more restaurants, but they've been closed, Applebee's and Boston Market, who all converge in the same place. There's six banks, Huntington Citizens, which also just remodeled so they can increase their traffic into their drive-through, Dollar, PNC, Ohio Savings, and Chase. So on the corner of Cedar in Warrensville, which has a lot of traffic and the traffic lights are not synced because when you come, I guess, east Cedar, if there's a bus in front of you and he turns onto, or there's a bus on Warrensville and it goes in front of Walgreens, people bust through those lights and then they stop traffic because they can't move until the other light by Arby's turns green, and so they're blocking traffic on three lanes of traffic. On the corner of Cedar and Warrensville, there's a Whole Foods Market, which generates a lot of traffic, a Masher's store, which generates nothing, Macy's and Target, and that's a lot of traffic coming through there all the time. You also have your buses, and they don't like coming to the intersection of Cedar and Warrensville, and so they cut through Okalona County and Eastway so they can have a straight shot at your depot, which is right here at Wiley, and it increases traffic all day long and is very obvious on the South Yew part of Miramar. Now I understand there's supposed to be maybe apartments built, 240 of them, where behind Target somewhere, which is going to cause even more traffic because people in apartments go to work and everyone else goes to work down Cedar and comes home at the same time. So how much is all of this going to empty onto Miramar, which is only a two-lane neighborhood street? It's not meant to have all this traffic, buses, trucks, all kinds of stuff come down there. So how much more noise, garbage, environmental impact will this have on the South Yew Miramar and the University Heights side of Miramar? And if those apartments are built, will the traffic have to enter and exit either Warrensville, Cedar, or Miramar? So widely, I understand, it's going to be a community center maybe, so where does that traffic go? So there's a lot of traffic going into three streets that are already overcrowded, one of which was never meant to take this kind of traffic, and it's very upsetting, and I will be back on the November 20th meeting.
Hey, thank you, Miss Schoenfield. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the city this evening?
Rachel Gross, 3845 Northwood Road. Good evening. My name is Rachel Gross, and along with my twin sister Sarah, I own Bialy's Bagels. I am here tonight to continue to voice my opposition to the proposed addition of Chick-fil-A in University Heights. In June of 2022, Forbes.com published an article titled "Seven Reasons to Shop Local and Support Small Businesses." Number one, stimulate local economies. Number two, reduce the carbon footprint. Number three, create more jobs. Number four, give back to the local community. Number five, better customer service. Number six, nurture innovation and growth. Number seven, support the American dream. While each and every one of these certainly applied to my local bagel shop, let's visit number four for a moment, giving back to the community. In April of 2020, my sister and I felt a very strong need to help support frontline workers battling the earliest stages of the COVID-19 pandemic. Inspired by our neighbors and good friends at Tracy's Restaurant, we developed a dozen donation program. Our customers were able to purchase a dozen bagels for $10 that would be donated directly to local hospitals. Bialy's matched every dozen purchased, and from May of 2020 to July of 2020, we donated 500 dozen bagels from Hillcrest Hospital to Metro Hill Hospital with many stocks in between. We also made donations to a food program at Heights High School. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I do not recall any fast food chain in the area doing anything of the sorts. Now allow me to take the liberty of adding a reason number eight to the Forbes.com list, better treatment of employees. In September of 2020, we had an employee ready to return from maternity leave, but couldn't, but she couldn't figure out how to make that happen because she had to monitor her kindergartner during virtual learning. Most corporate chains in this situation would say, see you later, but not Bialy's. We got a desk and a chair, and Leila attended her first few months of kindergarten at the bagel shop. When school wasn't in session, but mom was working, through a whole team effort, we were able to take her to the park, read her stories, and as a former educator, I was even able to do some fun mini projects with her. Again, I do not recall hearing about any fast food chain doing something similar, but I do recall hearing stories of their employees losing their jobs because they had to monitor virtual learning. Our small business made it work. In March of 2021, Bialy's was anonymously reported to the Department of Labor. Although this investigation cost us a small fortune in legal fees, I don't think you'll be surprised to hear that the results of the investigation turned up nothing. We had one small overtime violation that was immediately rectified, and we have been incredibly vigilant since to ensure we don't make the same mistake again. We did not realize that although our manager is on a salary, he is not overtime exempt because his day-to-day duties are considered hourly tasks. He was immediately paid every cent we owed him, and he now pops in and out like everyone else to ensure he is paid overtime when he earns it. A Chick-fil-A in Utah had a similar violation in September of 2023, but owed multiple employees more than nine times the amount of bad pay that we did. The Department of Labor was also looking for minor labor law violations. We had zero. We take these laws incredibly seriously and diligently schedule our minor employees to ensure we are following the rules 100% by the book. You know who doesn't do that? Chick-fil-A. The same Department of Labor investigation in Utah resulted in $187,000 in fines for violations related to minor employees. Is this the kind of employer we want representing our community? In the past year alone, they've had several restaurants violate these laws in several different states across the country. I scoured the internet in search of a statement from the corporate offices of Chick-fil-A denouncing these practices, however, I was unable to find a single statement from anyone in the corporation. It's feeling more and more like this might be a done deal, but I truly hope this project does not move forward. As important as speaking out against this feels to me, I also believe it is important to be a part of the solution, so I will finish tonight with two suggestions. If I was fortunate enough to be able to afford the medical building and develop the land, I would go for either a bowling alley or a really fun miniature golf course. These are two activities I would love to have access to in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Gross. Is there anybody else who would like to address the city this evening?
Jeffrey Pearl, 2579 Lafayette Drive. I realize there is still one more city council meeting scheduled prior to Thanksgiving, but I wanted to take this opportunity to express some gratitude to some people prior to tomorrow's election. First off, in recognition for work beyond the norm, I want to publicly thank the Service Department for not only their always exemplary work, but special efforts in leaf pickup I saw on Saturday, as well as the hazard waste and paper shredding drop-off. Special things also to new Service Director Alan Pennington, who's made a great impression on many folks with how well things are coming along in the areas of service for our city. Thanks also for all the efforts put forth by our Police and Fire Department, the recent Fire Department open house, and the regular collection of aluminum cans for burned children are both great. Police presence, protection, and participation on Halloween was noticed and appreciated by many residents. I believe we should also recognize all the hard work that has gone into the campaigning for the four city council seats that are being voted upon. Whether people are casting their votes for the incumbents or among the other five candidates running, I feel everyone has put a lot of effort forth that our entire community in University Heights should appreciate. No matter opinions and regardless of my opinions expressed in person or through social media, I know that all nine folks want the best for University Heights. Thanks to all the existing council, as well as the mayor, for the work that has been accomplished. Whether the makeup of council changes or not, on behalf of many residents, please do all that you can to move our city in a unified path to improve what we have and work towards making our city better by committing to work together more cohesively in the coming year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pearl. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the city this evening? If there's none, then we will move on to reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action thereon. We have a lengthy agenda that will be briefed. City of University Heights received the Ohio Auditor of State Award from Ohio State Auditor Key Favor. The award is presented for excellence in financial reporting in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and compliance with applicable laws for fiscal year ending 2022. It reads further, the citizens we represent are well-served by your effective and accountable financial practices. Or as I like to put it, another clean audit, another recognition by our state auditor, always appreciated, and to be commonplace, we are a long way off from having to recreate the books of the previous administrations last year, as we had to do revisibly year 2017. My thanks go not only to Finance Director Dennis Kennedy and his team, but to all directors and chiefs and department heads who follow the best practices set forth by our finance office. Thank you all. Two more things. The civic awards are Wednesday, November 15, 2023, 6:30 PM, at the Jardine Room at JCU Lombardo Center. Looking forward, who is this year's Citizen of the Year, Employee of the Year, and so on? The glory will be in attendance, there will be heavy appetizers and a cash bar, and much recognition for select individuals in the community who made a real difference in 2023. Citizens' record is excused this evening, so I will announce that our next public meeting on the zoning code update is Wednesday, November 29, 2023, here at the Wiley School. This room from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Sean Suter of Zono will be here to lead the continuing discussion on the calibration of the code. I wrote this before the safety committee meeting, but yes, we will be discussing parking as one of the main issues. If you haven't already, don't forget to vote for Martin. Thank you. This concludes my report. Next, our reports and communications from the City of Council on the taking of action thereon. This is one.
No report, Mayor.
No report. Are there any reports from any members of council? Ms. Weiser?
There will be a building and housing meeting Monday, November 20 at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Weiser. Any other reports from members of council? All right, very good. And then we will move to reports and communications from the directors of various departments. First is Department of Finance, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Two quick things, we will have appropriation of items for the next meeting that will include any or all of the items that are on the agenda tonight for approval, that will require some adjustments to the 2023 budget, and also appropriation adjustments for the approval of three labor contracts, actually four. Those were not contemplated in the original budget for the year, so we're working on the cost of those through the end of the year, plus the retroactive payments back through July 1st. And I will also be wrapping up the month of October and hope to get some information out to everybody prior to the new script.
Okay, very good, thank you. Mr. Kennedy, any questions for Mr. Kennedy? City Attorney, thank you. Moving on to Department of Law, Mr. McConville. No report, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Public Safety, Police, Chief Rogers.
No report.
No report, thank you, Chief. Public Safety, Fire, Chief Perko.
No report.
No report, thank you, Chief. Service Department, Mr. Pennington.
Very briefly, just wanted to mention that we have begun our onsite evaluation for the recycling study. It began today, will be going throughout the week. So in addition to that, we have completed two passes of leaves throughout the city, and we're about a quarter of the way done with our third pass of leaves throughout the city. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Pennington. Any questions, Mr. Pennington? Ms. Weiser?
Mr. Pennington, I know it's difficult, is there any way that an announcement can be made about the streets or leaves are being picked up?
Where we're at with that, it's somewhat difficult to make an announcement on that due to the fact we have anywhere from two to four crews out on a given day, and trying to determine exactly which streets they're going to be on has been a bit of a challenge as we don't know until end of previous day as to where they're going to be at. Making those announcements a little bit tardy in relation to letting people know from parking and that standpoint.
I know, social media, a number of residents have been asking something anyway, that'd probably be very helpful.
Typically, we're not making that information till that morning as we're getting ready to...
Only until after the morning.
Thank you, Mrs. Sacks.
Thank you, Matt. I mean, just like, we have the signs posted for fire hydrant flushing, and we know that and fans, but I have seen just sporadically in the past, just not in any type of schedule, you know, leaf collection today, tomorrow, something, just to see how that will go. I appreciate some attempt, and if it's too late in the morning, then yes, there's a roadway park there, but perhaps there is some way to roll that out, especially if more than one pass has happened without any success. Appreciate you considering that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rock?
Yes, so I know the, I guess, policy to pick up leaves this year is through the vacuum as opposed to bagging the leaves. I just noticed on my drive here, there's probably two dozen houses I passed that are already bagged, so you're still accepting bagging, correct?
We are simply bagging leaves, however, the cost of that is about five times that of the bag.
That I understand, but I'm imagining that those 20 or so houses that I drove past that had bagged leaves more aware of the policy change. I did see it in the Friday wrap-up, but there's quite a few who don't get it, so I just want to make sure it's still an available option. If someone wasn't aware, I don't want them to go out their house in December and see it bagged.
No, it is, it is.
It's still being picked up.
Yes, it's still being picked up, and it's something that we will readdress as we do our brush and yard waste.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Pennington? Thank you, Mr. Pennington. Building Department District Chief is out of town and he's excused, Housing and Community Development, Mr. Engelbreit.
No report tonight.
No report, thank you. City Engineer, Mr. Juney, you attended this evening because you have a couple of items, so thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I have two items on the agenda tonight, we'll talk more about that when we can get to it. The two items I want to report on are both the waterline jobs. The Saybrook Waterline Project is 95% done, the paving, asphalt paving is actually scheduled for tomorrow. Once they do that, there's a little bit of cleanup to do and that project won't be completed. The emergency project, which is on Sills Beach, near Milton, there's 300 feet of waterline that broke six times in five days. Cleanwater immediately responded, they've been out here fixing the main, and they hired a contractor to replace it. All the houses are on temporary water mains. The new water main is actually installed, they passed the air test on Saturday, now it has to pass samples, has to pass two samples in a row to make sure it's safe to drink, and once that happens, they'll hook up, there's 11 houses that are affected, six on one side, five on the other, and they hope to be doing that by the end of this week, it'll take them a couple of days, they do about four or five houses a day, so they should be able to get done in two to three days with that, and we'll be able to then fix the road and do that. So just wanted to report on the progress of these two items.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mr. Juney. Mr. King?
Yes, Mr. Juney. Is the water tower in Bejewry back in service yet?
And I'm not sure. You know, they took it out of service to paint it, and they said, when our water main kept breaking, they have another couple of weeks, so it's probably close, but I couldn't tell you if it's back in service yet.
Hopefully we're, I haven't heard of any other recurring issues, so hopefully we're past that, so thank you.
I would also do that.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Rock?
Yeah, I have a question for you. So last time we met, we were discussing the heating of the restrooms in the park, and with my understanding that that, the project went to you for design, I happen to have seen a set of drawings, and I noticed that the drawings indicate the building footprints doubling in size to add two more restrooms, so I'm assuming the scope had changed, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so when did that scope change?
When you received the NOPEC money, I believe. Sometime, yeah. Yeah. They wanted to not only winterize them and add heat to them, but also expand it because you didn't have enough, you had all those porta-potties during the big events that you have, so...
So NOPEC is including money towards us, but as a grant? So NOPEC is including money towards us, but as a grant for the expansion then, or just the heat?
It is eligible, from what I understand. Indiana knows better than I do, because she did all that.
Do you know percentage-wise, is that a full coverage of it, or is there a match? Do we have to match a certain amount?
I don't know, Mr. Rec, I believe there's a small match that we have to do, but it's actually a series of grants that we have had in escrow for a couple of years, so it's more than one year's worth of NOPEC money. I don't know the exact, yeah, I think it was for a small.
Okay. Just because it was the first time we're hearing that bathrooms are growing, not a problem with that, I'm sure we need additional restrooms when there's conflicts in the park. I just wish council would be notified, told when there's projects, I know we're working.
I know at the beginning of the year, you had explained that any projects coming before
us should outline what the projects are, et cetera, but this is the first time I'm hearing about it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for Mr. Juney?
Nope, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Juney. I waited until you walked away to say. Communications and civic engagement, Mr. Cook has been excused from this evening's meeting. Economic Development, Mrs. Draper has also been excused from this evening's meeting, but I made the announcement through Zono. So that concludes the reports and communications of the directors. Next is the reading and disposition of ordinances, resolutions, motions, and consideration of agenda items. First item is a motion to enter executive session for personnel matters. This is in connection with the subsequent item I have to be. Mr. Slesnik, are you here? I see you now, okay, very good. Is there a motion to enter executive session for personnel matters? Mr. Slesnik, Mr. Kennedy will be joining us.
Second.
Very good. Motion by Mrs. Weis, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, a second by this motion. Mrs. Thompson, call the roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Clooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Weis.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Very good, we will go into executive session, everyone here is welcome to say.
The man in the hour.
Sometimes I like to whisper things in there.
Sometimes I like to whisper things in there.
Pretty good.
See, I knew you were first here, first here of all this, and.
But a lot of long things that you can't.
Well, congratulations.
Yes.
No, it's very interesting because it sounds like it's hard to be.
No, I mean, I did always say that.
I'm sure.
But it absolutely doesn't work.
Took it for lunch.
I don't know, I started my head, no, I sniffed it.
They got a certain standard to supplement that in my city.
The city was on the, on the, on the, um, the city allowed it zoning and for safety.
There are more drivers than is appropriate by one resident.
Well, I mean, I wouldn't necessarily, because.
I appreciate the service leadership.
Yeah.
I don't judge them.
Yeah.
So.
I love that.
I'm not sure if it could go.
One of our, one of our, one of our special questions.
There's also twenty-four.
On University Square.
And it's so much space.
That's it.
My, you know, it's, 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 it's.
And the tour is square.
And it's, and it's so much space.
That's it.
That's it.
My, you know, it's, 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 it's.
And now we do this business.
I'm not going to.
I see what my apartment structure is.
And how far.
Sure, well.
And where's the.
Yes.
But with the government.
Good Lord.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I prefer, so.
One of them.
Yeah.
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 I think they've done there so long, everybody's been wondering.
Are you doing something?
I saw it.
Yeah.
It seems like they, it's increasing.
Yes, yes.
I don't know what that is about. I've been looking at one of the managers of the customer service.
Yeah, no.
Is there a time one?
Especially Amazon.
But they may not even know, it may be above their.
Amazon, but I mean, it's, it's.
Well, it may be a regional center that's handling sort of the story of the business. You can't go weird today.
You know, if you have local business, you know, it makes it more successful, or where you have to fill all.
Oh, really?
So you can, you can, you can, you can make a difference.
Yeah, I think a lot. I just, I just, I just, I, I've been at Walmart once, and, and before that, I had this, because every kind of director is such a busy place. I don't care how much you make, I would much rather.
Yeah, but I wanted exactly when we are, I want to.
Hmm.
They didn't have, they didn't have the chewed bits, they were all too short, and they had some completely different, and that's what happens if you get it.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I don't.
Back in Amazon.
Years ago, there was a, I knew somebody who was, 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 was in there, someone said, I think some length of chain, or something, somebody that, like, it's like the paper.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
So.
We're, with those, on, sitting over there.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We knew that, but she was actually, it's like a little kid that.
I get it, but.
You're in the city, right?
And you're deciding, like, what could you, I mean, doing, how could you, because homework exists, like, so.
Oh, my God.
You can, you can.
Oh, my God.
You don't have somebody else.
Well, homework, that's, that's a good way to.
Sure.
Yeah.
What, 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 what,
I love it. We want to get back to, if you want to do it while mask wearing was still a thing, I just don't want to dance while wearing a mask and see how to be able to do it. So we're hoping that COVID will keep line low or lay low even more and then we'll be able to get back to. If you want to travel, be a lot of town, put a fire or two.
Wow.
That's a lot of fun.
Cool.
So what does it go here? What do you do? What do I do?
Yes.
Work a lot. Hang out with my friends and family a lot. I'm part of the North Coast Men's Chorus.
Nice.
It's about a 70 person chorus and we perform three, three times a year.
Nice.
I like that a lot.
Cool.
I'm trying to run for a bunch of. Must be in this type of a scene, boys. It's fun.
Tell me how that goes. I couldn't get paid this long, so.
Is there a motion to exit executive session, return to regular session?
Solomone.
Motion by Mrs. Wise, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Wise, Mrs. Thomas, we call.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Ms. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Just step out for a minute.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries and we are back on the regular session. Our next item is item D, Wardens 2023 dash 62, establishing the salary range and pay rate range for non-hiring unit employees and declaring emergency. This is on emergency, this is Lesnick. You approach the podium and you will have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Like the mayor said, for you is a salary ordinance memorializing the current rates of pay for non-hiring unit personnel, as well as providing flexibility to provide potential general wage increases to those employees to the city see fit.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mrs. Lesnick. Mrs. Thomas.
Yes, thank you. A couple of things. Just, first thing, I just might as a law director. I do have some talents, but can we make this first reading as opposed to on emergency?
Yes, if there's no motion, it will be considered as on first reading.
Okay, great, thank you. So just a couple of notes that I'd like our H of R rep to possibly update after discussion. The first thing is there will be job descriptions that will be sent to all of the council members before the next reading. And I did a couple, I think they were just errors on the actual salary chart. The first thing is where you, where the clerk of council is, that pay range is not in line with everybody else's. That needs to increase the top another 7,500. The same thing with the service department director, that actually has to increase 12,500. If you compare to all of the other directors and like positions, those two are not in line. The second question I had was for the finance director. There's two items that say deputy, deputy finance director full time and part time. We currently don't have one, right?
We have a part time deputy.
Oh, she's called a deputy?
Yes.
Okay. And she's part time?
Yes.
So, and then the finance associate is the other person in finance and marketing, correct?
Correct.
So.
That's a part time.
Okay, is there a need to even have the line of the deputy finance director full time then?
Um, I believe that was something that we briefly discussed that in the event that that position would be replaced, you could perhaps get somebody that would be full time as opposed to part time.
Okay, so you're comfortable with keeping that, so we have the option possibly in the future.
For the time being, yeah.
Okay. All right, so those are, the last thing, the last note would be just for the next reading. If we could have what our current pay range is, so we can compare to, to this updated one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further comments? Seeing done, there is no motion, we will treat this as being on first reading. And we will consider the first reading having been had. Thank you. Next is item C, Resolution 2023 dash 67, recognizing the accomplishments of Cleveland Heights University Heights High School senior Nathaniel H. Tish, who has achieved the rank of Eagle Scout. Have a resolution here introduced by all of council. Whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is the seventh and highest rank in the Boy Scouts of America. Whereas less than 10% of all Boy Scouts complete the journey to become an Eagle Scout. And whereas the dedication to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout requires a commitment to integrating into one's life the lessons of lifelong learning, resourcefulness and leadership. And whereas the multi-year journey to the Eagle Scout rank is one of the most demanding and transformative experiences a young person can undertake. Along the way, an Eagle Scout acquires skills through the merit badge program, develops confidence in the outdoors, practices leadership and plans, develops and implements a service project for the benefit of their community. And whereas Nathaniel Tish dedicated his Eagle Scout service project to beautifying the landscape at the University Heights Library, bringing together 16 volunteers who dedicated 80 volunteer hours to make landscape plan a reality. And whereas, as a member of Boy Scouts of America, Troop 179, Lake Erie Council, Nathaniel Tish successfully completed his Eagle Scout Order Review on August 18, 2023. And whereas Nathaniel Tish of University Heights is a senior at Cleveland Heights, University Heights High School, a four-year member of the varsity swim team, and a member of the school orchestra as a violinist. And whereas Nathaniel Tish also lends his musical talents to the Cleveland Orchestra Youth Orchestra. And whereas Nathaniel Tish puts his swimming skills to use as a purpose part of life art. And whereas the members of the University Heights City Council, whose names are affixed below, wish to recognize, applaud and make public to the residents of University Heights Nathaniel Tish's many achievements. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the City of University Heights, Ohio, that section one council hereby offers its sincere congratulations to Nathaniel H. Tish for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Council further applauds Nathaniel H. Tish for his stellar career as a student at Cleveland Heights University Heights High School. Council wishes Nathaniel H. Tish well in all of his future endeavors. Whereas it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this ordinance were adopted in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and any of those committees that resulted in such formal action were meetings opened to the public in compliance with all legal requirements. There are centralized for myself and every member of council, together with the clerk of council on law. Is there a motion? Solomone, is a motion to approve this resolution by Mrs. Wise, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll take the second from Mr. Cooney. Any discussion on the resolution?
Yes, Mr. Cooney. Um, my older son was in the scout program at Jezu School. And there were a few of the scouts that did achieve the rank of Eagle Scout when he was there. And the commitment from that person as he go through the ranks to achieve Eagle Scout is, quite frankly, it's, it's impressive. It is a long-term, you know, process that the, that the individual goes through. And it's about serving others as you achieve different ranks within scouts. And so my, you know, sincere congratulations. This is more remarkable achievement.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Cooney. Mrs. Wise.
I'm not sure if you know that Mr. Tish is in the audience.
Oh, wonderful, thank you.
About his son.
I was, I was hoping.
I'd be able to.
I thought it was you, Mr. Tish, but I wasn't sure, I didn't want to presume. Thank you for being here. And, um, thank you in our best to you and your son for this achievement. Yes, Mrs. Wise.
Just from the record, I understand that he is actually at a college. He was out interviewing them, rather than them interviewing him. Hopefully they'll be able to stay at least the college of his choice. And certainly we are all very impressed.
Very. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing done, Mrs. Thomas, we call.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Tish, we will circulate amongst ourselves the resolution and everyone's here to sign it, so you should be able, I think, to leave with it. Is that okay, Mrs. Thomas?
You want, you want to write your?
We can do that. It sounds like an argument. So. Maybe we could take a picture of the resolution with Mr. Tish. And then we can frame it and present it that way to your son. While we take him off and circulate it.
Anything else? Like, why do you decide?
This side still needs to kill. This side. Okay.
Yeah, let's.
Selling presenter.
All right, Mr. Crank, you take your. And if anyone would like to come up and present this to Mr. Tish. Do this together. And let's get everybody up here.
One. Everybody here, one, two, three.
I'm sorry, it was on cinema. Okay, try this again here. You need help like that. One, two, three. One. Thank you.
Mr. Tish, well, we have contact information for you. Okay, we will take it. Thank you. All right, we will then move on to the next item on the agenda. Item D, Motion to Set Nominations for Resident Appointments to Play Finance. Is that to the support?
Yes, thank you. Currently, the finance committee has three empty positions for the, for the lady, Pisa Van. We have circulated the resumes of people that have been interested. And I would like to nominate, especially because we have budget variance coming up, to fill those three positions. Mr. Amadoua can nominate separately or can I do that all? Yeah, well.
We would typically nominate separately.
Okay. So the first person that I would like to nominate is Sean Belt.
I'll second. For the nomination, second. Three of these one at a time. Okay. Mrs. Wise, how many appointments were you filling?
There's three.
Three.
We have the, the items split up on the agenda, but it's really, it really isn't something we can handle all at one time. I think, I think the question would be whether there's any discord as to who's being nominated, because you can entertain more than one nomination for people or not. But if, if people want to clarify that there isn't such discord, we can proceed to vote one by one. It's really. We don't have that conversation amongst yourselves.
Yeah, okay, Mrs. Wise.
Uh, thank you. Thank you to all the people who have submitted your resumes. They are stellar. You've been involved and I can add people to your contributions. You have a lot to offer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do not see the resumes in the packet, so.
I have them from the, what was it, the finance committee?
They were from the finance committee and the city council also. I think I missed the third.
I got it from a previous meeting, I don't have it from this.
Mr. Rock.
I serve on the finance committee and I've seen everybody and just a wonderful group of people. We're going to have a full committee again, so I look forward to that. I have no problem approving these all together, since I plan on voting yes for all.
Is your government, how, how long was the term on the finance committee vote?
I, I don't recall. Um, I, I. My understanding is that we're filling on filled terms that may be expiring soon. But I don't know how long maybe the term is by memory.
My recollection is that it's two years and they'll be expiring at the end of the calendar. Okay. Mr. King.
I was going to say the same thing. I reviewed the relevant components before the meeting, just in preparation, and your recollection matches.
Okay, thank you. So we have one nomination on the floor.
I, I think the question to ask at this point is if there's another nomination as to the particular position that's, that we have a nominee for. If there's no other nomination, I think we take the role and then we proceed to the next nomination.
Okay. All right, if there's no further discussion, Mrs. Thomas, we call it all on the nominee, Sean Belt.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Is there another nomination?
Uh, yes, I'd like to nominate Emily King. She'll also be in the asset to finance.
Okay, we have a nomination of Emily King. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Marshall. Any discussion on this nominee? Mrs. Thomas, we call it all.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
The last nomination is Charles Caddison.
Nomination, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Sacks. Any discussion on this nomination? Saying no, Mrs. Thomas, we call it all.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Okay, very good motion carries. So I believe that exhausts letter D and letter E on the UG. And then we move to letter F, ordinance 2023-57, approving the amendment of Article 5, I of the Bylaws of the Norma Self-Insurance, Full Clarity, and Emergency. This is on emergency, Mr. Crank.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This is basically to allow um, the insurance consortium that we are a member of to hold their meetings remotely as opposed to in-person. That expired um, in accordance with some of the other emergency provisions after the pandemic. And I think um, from a personal standpoint, and it's also um, a shared opinion from the other finance directors that participated in the group, that we can get just as much done remotely through Zoom, through sheer Excel files, agendas, that sort of thing. Right now, traditionally, we we have the meetings out in Hudson, so they throw travel time and going back and forth. It does become a little bit of a burden for sometimes routine things that need to be focused on. So um, I don't know, Mr. McCallum, has anything else? I believe Mr. Cicero is in support of this.
He is. Um, there are a number of other communities that have already adopted this change. And um, I think it's really just for convenience. I don't think there's any other motivation behind it.
I agree with that. Very good. Thank you. Seeing discussion on the motion, or is there a motion yet? Is there a discussion on this item? Is there a motion approved on urgency? Some of the down urgency. A motion by Mr. King on urgency, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Weiser. Any discussion? That is done, then we will take two votes. The first is on the suspension of the rules. Mrs. Thomas.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Nominate a motion.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Very good motion carries. Thank you. Next is item G, ordinance 2023-60, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for natural gas service with NOPAC for natural gases. This is authorized by Mr. Crank.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, our current contract with NOPAC for natural gas expires at the end of this month. Um, I asked them for a proposal for renewal. This is a two-year renewal at the rate of $3.91 per MCF. Uh, right now, that is about 58 cents per MCF, lower than the rate that would be offered if we um, wanted to separately enter into a contract through NOPAC. So it's a good deal. Prices are going down. This will lock us in at that rate for two years.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Crank. Any questions for Mr. Crank? Any discussion on the item? If not, is there a motion approved on emergency?
Some down emergency.
Motion approved on emergency by Mrs. Sacks is second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Cooney. Any discussion? Saying no, we'll take two votes. Mrs. Thomas, some suspension of the rules.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
And the main motion.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next is item H, ordinance 2023-60, amending subsection A, codified ordinance section 891.05 entitled Annual Return, declaring an emergency. This is on emergency. Mr. Crank.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This is some background for council. The next five ordinances, including this ordinance, are all um, amendments to the city's existing tax code that are required as a result of the passage of Hospital 33 by the Ohio Assembly. Uh, that law was passed in late June of this year. And we, along with all of the other Rita municipalities, have been waiting for guidance from Rita as to the particular sections of our ordinance that need to be amended. Uh, because we have adopted Rita's model ordinance. Uh, we did get that guidance within the last couple of weeks. And so um, all five ordinances are being brought before today. Uh, there's no need for passage this evening. The cities on First Freedom just have to have them in effect by the end of the year. Uh, this first ordinance is an ordinance that um, essentially is in service of a provision in Hospital 33 that indicates that um, no individual under the age of 18 years old shall be charged with any municipal income tax. That has always been an elective um, component of the tax code. It does not require any substantive change to our tax code because we have previously enacted a provision that says just that. So this particular change will be done individually for us. Um, however, we decided, even if you've already elected to exempt individuals under the age of 18, we'd like this changed to ordinance for purposes of the ease of their distribution. So that is the first ordinance. Most of these are pretty technical. I'll walk through um, the best best I can to explain the changes to the code. But um, these are uh, ordinances that we do have to adopt.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. McCallum. Sorry. Yes, Mr. Rock.
Mr. McCallum, did you say as part of this House bill, taxpayers under the age of 18 would be exempt?
So I guess I'm just confused. In the package here, we struck that 18 years of age.
And that's because we have a provision elsewhere that that. Um, so many municipalities are changing two sections of our coding penalty. We don't have to change the one section because we already are exempting people under 18. They want to see this particular language in the ordinance. And so we want to make Rita happy. They're administering our tax ordinance. In most cases, they've asked for this change, and that's the reason.
I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Though Mr. McCallum said that uh, we just need to pass these this calendar year unless there's an objection, I would encourage passage this evening just simply to. Just because we'd be clear and we'd get it behind us. But you know, obviously, we'll follow the lead here of the council. Is there a motion to approve on urgency?
I'll be motion to approve on urgency.
Very good. The motion approved on urgency, Mrs. Wise, is there a second?
I'll second. Seconded by Mr. King. Any discussion? We'll take two votes versus unsuspension of the rules. Mrs. Thomas.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Any other main motion?
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise. Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next is item L, ordinance 2023-61, amending codified ordinance subsection 891.05 entitled Imposition Tax to amend the regulations therein that apply to businesses by adding provisions of regulatory priority of income for remote workers and declaring emergencies. So emergency, Mr. McCallum.
Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to Hospital 33, businesses may now um, report um, they may now make an election with respect to remote employees. Um, the election is um, essentially to choose an apportionment formula um, with respect to what's known as the reporting location of the employee. So the business can either elect to report the income solely to the community in which the individual works remotely, or alternatively, they can choose the apportionment um, election, which allows them the flexibility to either choose the municipality where the individual is working remotely, or to choose any other location that is owned or operated or controlled by the employer.
More additional thing, Mayor?
Yes.
Sort of one of those, it only applies to net profit filings.
That's right.
It does. It does not rewe the employer, the responsibility withhold for remote workers.
Yeah, thank you for making that distinction. This is a change that relates only to the net profits tax, not to withhold.
Very good. Thank you. I didn't verify it. Any discussion on the motion and is, or on the item, and if not, is there a motion? Some of the time urgency. A motion to approve on urgency by Mr. King, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Marshall. Any discussion? Saying no, Mrs. Thomas, will you, we'll take two votes. The first is on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
None of the main motion.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Very good motion carries. Next is item J, ordinance 2023-63, amending subsection G of codified ordinance section 891.05 entitled Annual Return filing by extending certain filing deadlines to carry an emergency. This is on emergency, Mr. McCallum.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance provides an additional automatic one-month filing extension for businesses who elect to take the federal um, extension. So in effect, the business is now able to take what amounts to a seven-month extension out of municipal term. This is a right that currently exists for individuals. It's being extended to businesses. This also complements for all taxpayers the right to recover costs or fees that they incurred in connection with notices that they might receive from the municipality in an instance where they've taken the extension. Uh, so my understanding is that it's the city's practice not to send any um, such notices to any taxpayer until the extension period has required, excuse me, has expired. And so um, we'll have to extend that practice to the business returns as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Crank?
Uh, no.
No, Mr. Crank, we can't discuss. Very good. Is there a motion to approve on urgency?
Some.
Motion by Ms. Weiser, is there a second?
Second on urgency.
Okay, second by Mrs. Wise. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call it all. First on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
None of the main motion.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Okay, very good motion carries. Next is item K, ordinance 2023-64, amending subsection C of codified ordinance section 891.18 entitled Interest Penalties to Add Sunset and Reade Provisions Related to Penalties for Failure to File in Carrying Emergency. This is on emergency, Mr. McCallum.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance would be now provisions that would allow the city to um, implement a $25 fine for taxpayers who fail to time file their return. However, that $25 fine will be subject to refund to those taxpayers who um, essentially are the first offender, if you will. If it's your first time failing to time the file, you can get your your fine money back.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. McCallum. Is there a motion to approve on, oh, sorry, Mr. Crank, it looks like you had something.
Uh, no, just sort of one of those, the current penalty is $150 per late filing. That's the max, but it looks like you're going to get $25.
Thank you, Mr. Crank. Is there a motion to approve on urgency? So a motion by Mr. Cooney, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Sacks, is there any special? Mrs. Thomas, we'll take two votes. The first is on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
None of the main motion.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Very good motion passes. Next is item L, ordinance 2023-65, enacting codified ordinance section 891.7 titled Election to be subject to revised code 718.80 to 718.95 and declaring an emergency. This is on emergency, Mr. McCallum.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This um, ordinance would allow um, taxpayers to opt out of the municipal code into certain provisions of the state code um, pursuant to which um, a single filing can be made with the state rather than multiple filings made to municipalities where a business has locations throughout the state. So essentially, it's it's creating a register for centralized filing for businesses who operate across the state, the state then apportions money to the municipalities and of course, with their respective tax codes.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. McCallum. Mr. Crank, any bad?
No, there's also a small provision pertaining to how much time we have to modify the state tax commissioner changes to the tax.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Sixty days.
There's a whole process um, that's put in place with the provisions of this ordinance where the tax commissioner is notifying us of taxpayers who make this election. We're providing information back to the tax commissioner so they can accurately apportion the tax.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve on urgency?
Some down emergency.
Motion by Mrs. Orson, emergency, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Rock. Any discussion? We will take two votes. The first is on the suspension of the rules. Mrs. Thomas.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
And then other main motion.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next is item M, ordinance 2023-66, enacting codified ordinance chapter 216 entitled prohibited campaign contributions and declaring an emergency on First Freedom. Sponsor is Vice Mayor Wise. Mrs. Thomas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, this ordinance was a collaborative endeavor by council and the refinance committee. Um, just a couple of highlights, and then the law director can sure enough, if I missed anything. This is self-monitoring, so it's um, it's something that every candidate needs to be aware of. And if passed, the board of elections will give it out when the candidate pulls their petitions. Um, so there is also no criminal offense. That's a major point of this. Um, the mayor and council have the same spending limits. Um, it was an exhaustive process to try and get to these limits. We looked at state and federal codes as well as a 10-year lookback of the actual city of university heights of what different candidates spent. Um, just um, a quick highlighting of each um, section. An individual can contribute up to $2,500, a PAC $500, no vendors and no corporations. A PAC five-hundred, no vendors and no corporations can contribute anything, and employees of the city, um, can contribute one-hundred dollars to a candidate. Um, if there is, um, a question that, um, has a grievance, there will be a campaign finance review board that will be set up. Um, if they are, if the candidate is found guilty, they need to pay back, um, the money as well as a two-hundred-dollar fine. I believe those are the highlights of that. Mr. McConville, was there anything that I missed?
So, the, I think, I believe the penalty provision reads that on first offense, um, probably it's disgorgement of the contribution that had been contributed. And then, on second or subsequent offense, the penalty would be disgorgement plus the two-hundred-dollar fine. It is a civil fine. Um, there's no, um, criminal component of the ordinance. Um, the referral, um, of, uh, violation of the ordinance is made directly to the law director. The law director can do one of three things. Um, he or she can, um, make the determination that the complaint has no merit, and that would end the matter. Um, he or she can refer the matter to the, um, to the board, that Mrs. Wise referenced, or the law director can do nothing. If the law director does nothing, the complaint automatically goes to the board. Uh, the board is made up of three members. Um, the composition of the board is, it mirrors our cell service commission provisions insofar as, um, only two of the three members can be from the same political party. Uh, so there has to be diversity, um, of political parties amongst, um, the board. And the ordinance also contains a provision that all three members of the, um, of the board do not be residents of the city, um, so that, um, additional layer of impartiality, um, is added to the review.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any further binding on this matter? Although we will consider the first reading to have been that. Next is item N, a motion except for bid for Fabrizian Trucking and Bane Company as the best and most bid for the twenty-twenty-three D Scarborough in Canterbury relief sewer contract in the amount of, you could see, one-hundred-seventy-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-seven dollars, and approving and approving or entering the contract with the same. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, we opened bids on October twentieth. We had four bidders, uh, for this project. The project consists of installation of two-hundred-and-thirty feet of, uh, sanitary relief sewer on Canterbury from East Farborough down to Meadowbrook. Down at Meadowbrook, it will tie directly into the Northeast Carolina Regional Sewer District deep tunnel. Uh, the project will eliminate sanitary sewer overflow, uh, connection that currently allows sanitary sewer, when it overflows, go into a storm sewer, which eventually goes into the environment. Uh, this project was recommended to us by the sewer district in their, in their SSES study. Um, it is also, I said, partially in my letter, but it's actually mostly funded, uh, by the sewer district. We have an MCIP grant, which is, yep, member community infrastructure grant, for eighty-six thousand dollars. We have our own community cost sharing dollars, uh, another eighty-six thousand dollars for that. So, the total funding we have is one-hundred-seventy-three-nine-oh-three, uh, with a low bid of one-seventy-nine. Um, we are eligible to apply for more construction, uh, for community cost sharing dollars, which we have, we are in process of doing that. Linda Blair was, uh, Linda Mayor, I'm sorry, was out this last week, and I didn't get a chance to finalize that agreement, but we will do that. We'll probably be able to get this a hundred percent funded, uh, and I'm pretty confident of that, so. Uh, Fabrizian's done a lot of work for the city of University Heights. Uh, they're a good contractor, and I recommend we enter a new contract with them as the lowest and best bid at one-hundred-seventy-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-seven dollars. And, uh, Mr. Kennedy, it is, um, reimbursable, so we do have to spend it first, show them the council check, uh, and, and, and get it back to the sewer, uh, sewer district. The, um, construction, um, uh, schedule for this is thirty days. By contract, they have to be completed in thirty days. If it's awarded tonight, we should get, uh, started by the end of the month, and it will be done by the end of the year, so.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions for Mr. Kennedy? If not, is there a motion?
Some.
Motion by Ms. Wise, or is that a second?
I'd like a second.
Second by Mrs. Sacks. Any discussion? Say now, Mrs. Thomas, you call.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, then, next is item L, motion to approve the change order request number two with CIA Aggressive Construction Company in the amount twenty-nine-thousand-sixty-two dollars seventy-seven cents for the twenty-twenty-three road program. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, thank you again. Um, change order number one, if you recall, was a storm damage that happened on August fourteenth from a tree, that monster tree fell down on Ashurst and took out a lot of pavement and brand-new curb that we had just installed. So, this is change order number two. Uh, the first one is, uh, extra work added to the contract, which we'd like to add to the contract. Uh, on Glendon Road, it's behind Jay Zoo. Uh, Cleveland Heights, University Heights, uh, school district has had a mobile unit there for, I want to say, three or four decades, I don't even remember when it was put in there. Uh, it was the old separation of church and state. It was state-funded, uh, extra help for media reading, I think it was, when my kids were there, and it had to be in the, in the right-of-way, so it was, uh, installed in the right-of-way at Glendon Road, not on church property. Uh, Cleveland Heights University has removed that mobile unit two weeks ago. Uh, and what's left is, I put it in the package, there's some pictures there to show you. Um, it's, it's not pretty. Um, the curb was taken out. There's a beat-up old slab there that the unit used to sit on. Um, and my recommendation is to extend that curb all the way back to the driveway where Glendon meets that cowl, uh, and just clean up all that curb on that side. Um, Aggressive did all that same work on, um, on the Merrimar side, because that was part of our road program this year, and I'm recommending that we do that. I'm not recommending we do the curb on Jay Zoo parking lot. Uh, I talked to the pastor and the principal and told them that's on them. They could use Aggressive if they want, or they could, you know, hire their own contractor, so. That's the first part of the change order that I'm recommending. Uh, the second part are final quantities. We've, uh, gone over the final quantities for the project, and it is done. Um, and I compared to, um, the, uh, well, we do estimate the quantities when we did this, it's unit prices, and so many linear feet of curb, so many cubic yards of asphalt, so many square yards of pavement to be replaced, uh, and you can't see that really until you take the asphalt off and then determine what needs to repair. Um, and, uh, if the iron, it exposes the iron here, you have to remove the iron, which is the catch base and lids, manhole lids and things like that. Anyway, uh, several of the streets came in under budget, or right on the budget, and Charney was over budgeted on this. Uh, and the reason for that is we estimated Charney to stop at the Dice Art intersection. And when I reviewed it going out there in the field, all the previous, uh, servicing projects also stopped, and intersection did not go into the intersection. We're not going to be there for a number of years from now to even get back in there. It made sense to do the entire, uh, interchange, intersection with Dice Art and Charney, which included all the, uh, handicap ramps. It ended up being as an extra thirteen thousand dollars to the, uh, contract for the two twenty-twenty-three road program. So, the two, uh, change orders together add up to twenty-nine-thousand-sixty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents, and I'm recommending it for approval.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. You got any questions for Mr. Kennedy?
This is Ralph. Okay, my question is about this mobile unit. So, walk me through this real quick. So, the school, the school owner owned the mobile unit?
Correct.
And it was placed on right-of-way?
On Glendon Road, yeah.
On Glendon Road, and we never got any, like, rent or anything for it being there for seventy-seven?
I have no idea what the agreement was. Like I said, it's been there for decades, uh, prior to me.
And so, the removal of the unit is what caused the damage?
Apparently, the curb was taken out when that was installed.
Oh, so it just had not been there?
It, uh, it, it used to be curb on that street, I assume, but, again, when the mobile unit was installed, I think they took the curb out.
Okay, so the curb's been gone for?
Yeah.
Cool. Okay.
Yes.
All right, then, that is, shoot that one.
Good, very good.
Mr. Kennedy, um, as I'm looking at a satellite image of that issue area, and there's a sidewalk, one of London that heads south at, uh, Benz, and then it picks up again when you go past the, the other entrance for, uh, the church parking lot at Jay Zoo. Would we extend with that sidewalk here, we connected?
It's not part of this quote. I mean, if you wanted to, you could, I guess.
I am, that's, well, I'm wondering if, and I don't know if it was there thirty years before the mobile unit was there or not, but when you look at for, uh, anyone walking along that street, particularly children, going to school, uh, to have that sidewalk extended coming through.
I think those trees would have to come up. We did that.
That's why, I'm looking at the pictures you took, and I'm looking at the satellite image, and, um, there's a telephone pole that's there.
Yes.
Trees will probably put there, probably is, uh, you know, it's like a green fence, wooded area. I'm not advocating for the removal of any of that, but I'm just, as an observation, I don't know if anything may have been considered.
At this point, I didn't ask the contractor for a quote for that. I didn't even look at the, uh, what, how many trees and stuff would have to be removed.
Yeah, I, I can't, yeah, I can't speak your way. I'm, I'm curious, and when they're, you know, with the curb, you know, is there the need for a group store curb at all for this, or this is just going to be replaced?
It needs to be replaced, yeah. Beyond just for the home.
It's not good.
I'm just thinking, sure, is there a need for it? All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Cooney. Uh, Mrs. Wise?
Yeah, I actually, two weeks ago, I was over there, and I actually agree with Mr. Cooney. There needs to be a sidewalk over there, especially toward by the school there. Um, kind of just, it's empty space.
Yeah, I didn't even think of that. Uh, I knew there was one on the other side of the street, and it stops and starts, you're right.
So, we possibly, I guess this is for the law director, if we could vote to approve this piece, and then we can get quotes and come back for the sidewalk?
Sure. Yeah, of course. Sure. Okay.
As a subsequent change order?
Or, or are we looking at?
Let me look at how many trees and things, or if that pole was in the way, or how we, I don't really want to stake it from there, but.
Would that be using parish property, or would that be city?
It's all public, right?
Public, right, okay. Maybe, maybe appropriate just to, maybe a conversation with, uh, pastor, uh, Father Malskas, just, you know, just, that's part of the conversation.
Yes. I follow this route. I can confirm, just looking at the Google Street View, that there was no curb where that mobile unit was, so it's just not there.
Correct. Okay. Thank you. All right, great. Is there a motion to approve the change order?
Some.
Okay, motion by, um, Mrs. Wise, is there, or, excuse me, Miss Wise, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mrs. Wise. Any discussion? Uh, Mrs. Thomas, you call.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Next is item P, a motion to approve the purchase of Cardiac Wonder Lite Pack Fifteen Twenty-Twenty-Three Striker in an amount of, you could see, forty-two-thousand-two-hundred-sixty-six dollars fifteen cents. Chief, right.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Council, this was one of the items discussed at safety committee prior to this meeting. Um, as indicated, this will be used as a reserve monitor, um, to be kept in the station for any potential walk-ins, as well as for equipment that gets out of service, and, uh, this will come out of our capital equipment fund.
Good, thank you, Chief. Any questions for the Chief? Now, is there a motion?
So, I was just gonna say.
No, I'm sorry. I didn't, uh, Ms. Marshall?
I was just gonna say, we did discuss this today and said we really thought we did. And, uh.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Marshall.
So, I'll.
Okay, Ms. Marshall makes a motion to approve. Is there a second? I'll second that. Second by Mr. King. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, you call.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is item Q, a motion to approve the purchase of one twenty-twenty-four Ford F-250 responding utility vehicle fully outfitted for a total cost not to exceed seventy-four-thousand-two-hundred-eighty-seven dollars fifty-seven cents. Chief, right.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, this will serve to replace unit eleven-seventy-one, a two-thousand-and-seven F-250 utility pickup truck. Um, we would recommend decommissioning that for response usage, but maintaining it for a plow vehicle for the city lots. Um, the proposed vehicle is a smaller chassis that will not have a plow on it, and we have fifty-five thousand budgeted in our replacement vehicle line for this item, so this would resolve the budget improvement.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Is there a motion to approve? Okay, motion approved by Mrs. Wise?
Aye. I was saying. Almost, I, I was thinking.
A second by Ms. Marshall? I didn't recognize you, Ms. Marshall. Did you want to speak about the Safety Committee treatment of the item?
No, also, this, this also was discussed, because then I said to you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Mrs. Thomas, we call her.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is item R, a motion to approve purchase of one fully outfitted 2024 Bronch, Chief, XL demo ambulance for a total cost not to exceed $422,596, Chief R.
Uh, this unit, um, is going to be replacing a 2014 ambulance that was also on our 500 capital improvement plan. Um, it will be replacing it with a slightly smaller chassis, but one that is more than sufficient. Um, it will be a demo unit that will be brand-new, but will allow us to have a cost savings of about $10,000 in shaving one to two years off to expect delivery, which would be estimated to be the year 2025. Um, it is also equipped with the power cap load system and stair chair, fully equipped price of $422,596. Um, we have $275,000 budgeted for this item, so this would also result in amendment.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Ms. Marshall?
And this apple was also discussed in, um, our safety meeting tonight, and I recommend this for council. So, um, a motion that we have approved.
Okay, with motion approved, purchase by Ms. Marshall, is there a second?
Second.
Second, though. Ms. Weiser, any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Thomas, we call her.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Any motion carries? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next is item S, a motion to approve purchase expenses for new police vehicles, related equipment and installation through state contract order, Chapman Ford, multiple other vendors, in a total of $266,932. Chief R.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this, uh, agenda is to replace four of our vehicles in our fleet at this time. That's due for routine replacement. Those vehicles are 7229, 7230, 7231, 7280, through which are 2016 Ford Explorers and 2015 Ford Toruses, and they'll be replaced with, uh, 2025 Ford Explorer, these are certain vehicles. Uh, the total amount, uh, that's been estimated for the vehicles, the equipment and the outfitting is approximately $266,932. Uh, there is approximately $30,000 of other covered funds in the police capital fund, and this, uh, total dollar value will be further offset by item T, which identifies traded value, approximately traded value for vehicles through Chapman Ford.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Ms. Marshall?
Yes, these items also were discussed in our safety meeting tonight, and, and this will pass through. So, a motion that we.
Motion approved. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Marshall. We have a motion to approve the purchase expenses for Ford police vehicles. Ms. Marshall, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Sacks. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call her.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Next is item T, a motion trade-in for police vehicles no longer being served as Chapman Ford for $42,000, which will reduce the original expense of the $266,932, Chief R. I think we can just incorporate your car parts, if you have anything further to add. Okay, very good. Is there a motion to approve the trade-in?
Some.
Motion by Mrs. Sacks. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. King. Any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Thomas, we call her.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries.